Stand from silence called by the president of the United States of America and to the republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Chair Seberg.
Here.
Vice Chair Spall.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Ms. Brezzi.
Here.
Ms. Miles.
President.
Ms. Brown.
President.
Dr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Flynn.
Here.
Ms. Breeden.
Here.
Thank you. Madam Chair, we have a forum.
Thank you. Dr. Casada, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, ma'am. We have an addition to the discussion agenda under old business, school board operating protocol.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the public meeting agenda as modified?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the public agenda meeting as modified.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezzi, that the school board, the city of Manassas, approve the public meeting agenda as modified. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. Okay, superintendent's announcements and spotlights. Mrs. Radford.
Good evening. Thank you Chair Seberg. Good evening to other members of the board and good evening to everyone that has joined us on tonight. I am excited to share just two spotlights with you tonight, and they are from Osborne High School, so I have a little bit of assistance this evening. Maggie Connors is here tonight, and she is the CTE, I'm sorry, department chair at Osborne, and also the advisor to the Skills USA group, and so she's going to come tonight. I told her earlier that there's a list that is too many to name of some of the other things that she does at the school, but she's going to assist us with our presentations for tonight.
All right. So we wanted to take a moment to recognize the time and dedication of our Skills USA members and advisors who put so much time into this organization this year. This Career and Technical Student Organization, or CTSO, exemplifies the talent and skills of our students across Osborne CTE programs, and we are proud of their hard work and representation of the school's programs. The students competed regionally and at the state leadership conference this year. Our students in criminal justice competed in traffic stop and crime scene. The training with their community partner advisors from the Manassas Police Department was invaluable. We'd like to thank Captain Petty and Officer Rodriguez for their commitment to our students. They have been immeasurable to these team members, and I just want to take a moment to thank them for dedicating so much to these students and our criminal justice program at Osborne. I would also like to thank Esteban Jordan, who is our criminal justice teacher, Chris Taylor, Eric Godwin, Tara Eason, all of our wonderful people, Osborne administration, and everybody for their support of our students. This is a collective partnership of some amazing professionals that are always finding ways to support our students. So I would like to recognize our competitors. So students, when I say your name, please come to the front. I know that not all of us made it tonight, but if you're here, please join us. Suzeth Ferofino brought home the silver medal for criminal justice. Anaya Evans earned her second gold medal for photography. She is not here this evening. Jasmine Bowman, Mitzi Aguilar, Bricia Juarez, Haley Cortez, Ashley Fabian Flores, and Juliana Fuentes Portillo all competed in crime scene investigation. Yuritza Martinez Ramos competed in the job interview category. Yuretsi Zarzua challenged herself to tackle a prepared speech she wrote and memorized, ultimately earning herself a bronze medal. Anna Boroff undertook the job skills demonstration A category, showing her panel of judges how fingerprinting is done by law enforcement. And finally, Gabriela Claus Ferofino and Tacy Rivas submitted entries for the T-shirt design competition. These students have all shown the determination and dedication required for Skills USA, and we thank them for continuing this organization's excellence at Osborne. And while I have them all here, we also want to congratulate our seniors who earned themselves cords for this organization by participating in it for at least two years and competing once at the state leadership conference. Those members are President Jasmine, Vice President Suzeth, Secretary Yuritza, and Treasurer Gabriela Claus Ferofino. Congratulations, ladies. Thank you so much for your dedication. All right. I also get the honor of presenting our Cyber Patriot Group. The Osborne Cyber Patriot Team is an after-school program that teaches students the cybersecurity skills needed to defend computers and networks. The team meets weekly. Mr. Frederick funds the team, registration fee, and snacks for the students. Students learn hands-on system administration skills by configuring Windows and Linux virtual machines to protect against attacks. Students also learn how to configure Cisco switches and routers within a high-fidelity network simulation. The Cyber Patriot Program is a national youth cyber defense competition run by the Air Force Association. There are over 3,000 teams across the United States teaching students about cybersecurity in a fun and competitive environment. The Cyber Patriot Team has three competitions held at the high school in October, November, and December. The goal of the team is to teach students how to secure computer systems and explore cybersecurity as a career. The team is led by Mr. Dave Frederick, a retired Lockheed Martin engineer with over 30 years of engineering experience and 16 years of student mentoring. I want to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Frederick for his unwavering support of not only the Cyber Patriot Team, but the robotics team as well. Mr. Frederick spends hours at Osborne High School with our students. He gives generously of his time and talents, and we are grateful for his support. Not only does he work with our students, but he also supports our new teachers serving as an SME. His talents and kindness are invaluable to our programs and school. I'm going to announce the students. I have the list. Yes, and so if my students could also come down as I call your names, we have Lucas Katema. All right, and then I have Levett Gaither. Dimas Gonzalez Ramos. Gabriela Hernandez Naharro. We have Rafaela Urquizoz Hurtado. And nevertheless, we cannot forget MJ. I'm so sorry. I couldn't read it.
Congratulations. Thank you all. Thank you so much. And thank you so much, Mr. Fredericks. That concludes our spotlights for tonight, Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Radford. Before we go on, I want to acknowledge elected office in the room tonight, Mr. Tim DiMaria, Commissioner of the Revenue. And also MEA leadership is here tonight. Thank you for being here. Board committee reports, and I'll go to Mrs. Stevens for our report on the policy committee.
Yeah, the policy committee met right before spring break on April 10th to look at the latest VSBA updates. We'll be going over those a little bit later this evening under the discussion agenda.
Thank you. All right, up next is citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. We appreciate the time you have taken to be here, and we treat citizens' comments as a public hearing and do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments, and up first I have Anna DiMaria.
Hi, I'm Anna DiMaria, and I am the proud president of the Manassas Education Association. In the fall of 2022, during the MEA PAC endorsement interviews, Ms. Stevens told us that she supported collective bargaining but needed more information. Ms. Brezzi gave a hard no. Ms. Spall said collective bargaining gives teachers a voice, and that it goes hand in hand with the teacher revolution she believed was needed. Fall of 2024 and more endorsement interviews, Ms. Brown said she supported collective bargaining, as did Dr. Jones. Ms. Miles said she thought MCPS staff didn't need it, although she benefits from it in Prince William County. Ms. Seberg supported it, even saying she would like the idea of partnering with the MEA to fight for more funding for our schools. And when seeking local Democrat endorsements, Ms. Brown, Dr. Jones, and Ms. Seberg publicly and unequivocally said yes, they support collective bargaining. On February 4th, we, the MEA, voted to launch our campaign. We thought now was the time because we have five board members who said they support us, and we did not know who would be in charge of MCPS after the next election. On February 5th, out of courtesy and out of respect, I emailed Ms. Seberg and Dr. Newman to let them know, and that turns out was a mistake. On February 27th, at a school board work session, an infographic appeared. It implied that collective bargaining would strip programs from students, from our students, and it was an insult, as if we, the educators, who pour our souls into these kids every single day, would ever want them to lose access to fine arts, to sports, or to any opportunity. In March, we held one training to educate ourselves on the process, and then April 8th, this board spent $6,572 to ram through a resolution banning collective bargaining for MCPS employees. And let's be clear, we did not ask you for anything. We did not demand contracts. We did not demand raises. We didn't even ask you to allow collective bargaining. We simply wanted to educate ourselves and to start a conversation. But the moment you, the employers, were confronted with the idea of sharing power with your staff, you tried to silence us. You betrayed your employees. But we will not be silenced. This is about every educator who deserves a voice and every student who deserves educators who are treated with dignity, respect, and fairness. We are still here. We are not going anywhere. We will continue to fight because our students and our profession are worth it.
Shaniqua Williams.
Good evening. My name is Shaniqua Williams, and I reside in the Brentsville District, a proud school counselor at Metz Middle School. Reflecting on the individual statements made following the premature vote to ban collective bargaining, without first consulting the educators, this impacts, I feel compelled to speak out. Board Member Miles, you directly benefit from collective bargaining in your home district. Your voice is reflected in your teacher contract, yet here, from the dais, you voted to silence the employees of this district. You dismissed comparisons to other districts regarding salaries and resources, yet had no issue using Loudoun County's process as a reference point to justify your stance. That contradiction speaks volumes. Board Member Dr. Jones, you stated, as a school board member, I don't even know what you all want, and yet when community members and employees simply asked to allow the conversation to happen, you voted to shut it down. This decision hindered the collaborative progress needed to ensure educators have a seat at the table regarding their working conditions. Board Member Bricia, I'm deeply concerned by your various statements. They were based on assumptions, lax citations, and served to craft a narrative that suited your perspective, most concerningly were your blatantly disrespectful remarks about students of color. You stated you have no desire to emulate Richmond City's student achievement. So let me share with the public what that really means. Richmond City schools are comprised of 85.5% students of color, students who look like me, students who resemble over 75% of our school population. In comparison, Manassas City Public Schools has 90.4% students of color. By disparaging Richmond City students, you effectively made harmful generalizations about the students of color, their academic efforts, and though you mumbled your concerns, we heard you. Anyone that wants to listen, go to hour three on the last minute, last school board meeting. You're an elected official, and your duty is to support all students, not to reinforce harmful and outdated stereotypes. Your remarks minimize the complexities of the challenges that our students face and dismiss their resilience and success, and if you won't hold yourself to a higher standard, I will stand here to remind you that you vowed to serve the students in this district, so let your words reflect that responsibility. Furthermore, I want to highlight at the last meeting, 22 speakers voted support for collective bargaining while only three opposed it, yet with overwhelming support, this board again brought pre-written remarks and passed a resolution to silence voices. And I'll send the last paragraph to you via email. Thank you.
Tammy DeHaven.
Tammy DeHaven, I'm a Manassas City employee and a resident of Manassas City. We asked for nothing. You were under no timeline, yet you spent over $6,000 to draft a resolution against what was literally a non-threat for at least a year. The public should know that. The public should also know that the data presented against collective bargaining was from one source, the legal group on retainer for Manassas City, who is known for union busting and benefiting financially off of pitting school boards against its staff. If the public has been attending and paying attention, there's also a lot of talk about mediators. Y'all can't seem to get your stuff together. Who's going to foot that bill? What will that cost? And why can't you work together to do what you were elected to do? I do have a suggestion, though, for increasing transparency. I'm publicly requesting that the school board work sessions get posted publicly, and that the public can hear them without needing to FOIA them. The projected cost is zero since you already record them. What's it hurt to post them on the website? I was pretty appalled when I got a letter on my work email asking me to beg the city, the city council, to fund me. It's interesting to see how many came out specifically to speak in support of that letter. Again, I'm being pitted against a funding body. I feel a need to remind you that it takes more than money to, and I quote, "from said letter," retain and recruit the high-quality educators our students deserve, especially amid rising costs and inflation. Guess what? It also takes communication, respect, and trust. No amount of money will keep employees in a place where they're not respected for very long, especially if they can go elsewhere to get better pay and a say. I'm tired of the excuses. Our uniqueness as a district, whether it's size, purse, or demographics, is always used as a reason to do what you want, or to remind naysayers why their suggestions won't work here because we're so unique. I'm tired of the comparing to others when it makes you look good, yet bashing them when it's convenient.
Jenny Higginbotham.
Good evening, everyone. I am being held together by Advil and decongestants, so I'm going to try and power through this. I wanted to cover a couple of things that had been on my mind since our last meeting. I know we pride ourselves on being a data-driven school division, and if that's true, where was the data from the lawyer who knows about collective bargaining? That lawyer told Mr. Gufeller that we would need to hire someone for payroll position. Why? It'd be the same as payroll now. You give a raise, and payroll makes the paychecks happen. So I'm confused as to why that position was listed. I'm also confused about why there was no real school division given as an example of how the costs were figured. We make our students cite their references. Maybe our central office people should have to, too.
I have no one else signed up. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak during public comment?
Okay, so unlike I typically would, I do not have any prepared remarks, but I do feel like it's necessary for me to still speak, and my thoughts are going to sound very jumbled because my thoughts are jumbled. I am a teacher in the city. I teach at Jenny Dean Elementary School. I'm a gifted and talented teacher. I was hired in 2014 by Dr. Jones at Jenny Dean Elementary School. It's my seventh year serving with the division. I left for four years, and I came back. My husband is also a teacher from Manassas City Public Schools, and he has been for a long time. We live in the city. We love the city. Any given day, you'll see us out and about in the city. We love the children in the city, and that's why we don't leave the city. It is extremely upsetting that this board found it necessary, like everyone has already said before, we really hadn't even gotten the ball rolling, and you preemptively banned collective bargaining. You are the only school division in the state of Virginia that wrote a resolution to ban collective bargaining. We have board members who are going into our schools and speaking to teachers during their contract hours, belittling collective bargaining. You know exactly who you are. Okay, this is unprofessional and inappropriate. It's okay, baby. Okay. When I think of people like Cesar Chavez, and I think of the women's suffrage movement, I guarantee that you hold these people in history in high regard. All they were doing were, they were asking for a seat at the table, whether it was women asking for a right to vote so that their voices were heard, or rights for farm workers. Jill, you specifically said that because we are not, I forget the verbiage that you used, but a hard labor position, that we don't need it. There are people who need it, but we don't need it. The majority of states in the United States do have it, and majority of the states who do well have it, and so I've pulled that data, and I'll send it to you, although I often hear absolutely nothing in response to the emails that I send. I spend hours and hours making sure that I find research. Thank you, Chair Seberg, for responding to my email. Thank you for pointing out my mistake. I do make mistakes, and it's only through honest conversations that we get to what is true and what is not true. I'm also extremely upset that this board came up with this idea of meet and confer. Well, you didn't, but Sands Anderson, your law firm, did, right? The ones who are union busters, the ones who have put on multiple presentations at the VSBA about collective bargaining. And they're very literate, was the word that Gufeller used, in collective bargaining. So on a side note, I don't know why they would need a separate lawyer, but you guys want a mediator. You don't even want to be at the table for meet and confer.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Dr. Newman doesn't want to be at the table. You're going to hire someone else.
You're welcome to send the rest of your thoughts to us through email.
Because you refuse to sit and talk to your teachers.
Thank you.
And this is sad.
Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Brezzi, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven zero. All right. First up on our discussion agenda tonight, from Finance and Operations, the FY 2526 student fees and charges, building use fees, food service fees and charges, fee waiver policy. Dr. Casada will give us a brief mention of what this is all about.
All right. Thank you, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the board. The fees and charges for FY 2526 are posted in board docs, and I'm happy to report that there are no changes in any student fees, including no change to the practice of providing free meals to all of our students. The only change in any fee that is in the attached document is about non-commercial use of the, I'm sorry, commercial use of the buildings paying for security. So that rate went up, the hourly rate went up from $50 to $65 for that, and the rest, nothing has changed since last year, or since this year.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board about this one fee change? Mrs. Stevens?
I just wanted to say I appreciate that the school division is still able to provide free breakfast and lunch for all our students. I think it's quite important, and as I speak to people in the community, everyone agrees that providing our students with free meals is an excellent decision, and I hope we're able to continue it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we will move along to our CTE update. And we have Ms. Chris Taylor to present an update on the CTE programs.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the school board, and Dr. Casada. As you know, this is my favorite night because I know you love CTE as much as I do. So I'm very happy to be here, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about an update, some things that we've been working on, and supporting our students. You'll note that I am not tech savvy. There we go. Thanks for your patience. Thanks for your patience. CTE strives very hard to reach every single pillar of our strategic plan. We do our very best to have inclusive and collaborative environments for each and every student in our care. We create a culture of caring, quality workforce, and strong family and community partnerships. CTE has a three-tiered approach here in Manassas City Public Schools. We have an awareness in kindergarten through sixth grade where we look at our elementary and intermediate students and ensure that we connect them with guest speakers and field trips and career days. We talk about job shadowing through TIGBY, and I think I mentioned TIGBY before, but it is a phenomenal free resource for our students. We have family STEM nights and OHS CTE student speakers, which I'll talk a little bit more about later on. In seventh and eighth grade, we look to exploration for our students, again, looking at guest speakers and field trips. Our career investigations course, which will now be mandatory starting the 25-26 school year, will allow students to explore all of the different pathways and different occupations and career paths that go with those. We also have Career and Conversation Day, which many of you have been to, which is pretty successful. And this year will, 25-26 school year will be our fifth year doing career and conversation. So we're very excited to partner with our legislative officials and our community on that. In grades nine through 12, we work on preparation so we know we need to prepare our students. They've had a chance to become more aware of careers. We've explored careers with them and options, and now we guide our students into possibly identifying a pathway that they feel they're connected to, that they could have a passion for. We again have guest speakers, industry tours. We do quite a few industry tours. For example, this year, our E M T students went to Micron to look at their emergency medical responses, as well as at the airport. So we do try and think out of the box, and we try and offer our students in all of our pathways, options to explore. We have CTE Expo Night, which I think most of you have been to as well, and interviews. We just had a very successful job fair with over 35 businesses. We had over 130 students who actually came with a resume ready for their first initial contact with a business partner. And actually, exciting today, I had several students stop in and say, "Oh, I heard back. I'm so excited." Or, "Mrs. Taylor, can you help us with our resume? They want to see something else on this." So it's been, it's a really positive, purposeful experience. And we also heard a lot of positivity from the business partners who were with us yesterday. We have our career pathways and our CTSOs, and I'll talk about those in a moment. We have continued our Women in Trades Lunch and Learn, and that's sponsored by Virginia Tire and Auto, and this is the third year that we're doing that. And then, of course, our Career and Conversation Day. Every single student in Manassas City Public Schools is a CTE student. I love saying that. It is exciting. It's exciting. It's challenging. We engage, we support, and we do everything we can to help our students prior to graduation. And so I am very proud to say that in Manassas City Public Schools, every single student is a CTE student. And I know that not all divisions can say that, but we can. So for those of you that are new on the board, I just went back just a little step and thought it would be helpful to share with you our programs and our career paths that we offer to our students. So at Metz Middle School, we have four different pathways. We have Business and Information Technology. We have Career Investigations, Family and Consumer Sciences, and Technology Education. And those are relatively new. This is our third year that we've continued with those programs, but when I first came, they didn't all exist. So that, I'm proud of that. I'm proud that we've been able to help our middle school students do that exploration. At the high school, we offer automotive technology, business, construction technology, cosmetology, commercial photo, criminal justice, engineering, health and medical, information technology, marketing, and Teachers for Tomorrow. Of those 11 pathways, we offer over 50 classes for students in CTE to choose from. Our CTE course components involve four areas: competency-based instruction, credential and dual enrollment, CTSOs, and work-based learning. Competency-based instruction, how do we get there? How do we ensure that each and every instructor we have in career and technical education is ready for the challenge? Subject matter experts, SMEs, that's my favorite word. We have SMEs come in and talk to our instructors. At the beginning of the year, in August, we had over 30 business partners come in, work with our teachers, talk about industry standards. How have they changed? Where do our students need to be at graduation so that they are workforce-ready? They talk about the technology changes that they've seen, the equipment needs, and how to engage students to be prepared for the workforce. We offer professional development to teachers throughout the school year, and that includes workshops and trainings. This year, we have focused on E Ls and sped support so that we're reaching each and every student in our classes. Industry tours. Again, E M T, we went to Micron, but that's just one example. We have a lot of industry tours that we set up with our students and our teachers. It's so beneficial for our teachers to go out. Our autotech teachers just went to Porsche, and they took a group of students. So they came back all excited, right? But they also learned about new technology. They learned about the trade. And so any way that we can to support our teachers with industry tours so that they're at the cutting edge and our kids are ready, that gives them an edge as well. And then V D O E opportunities. We have opportunities often that the state gives us for teachers to come down and serve on an advisory panel for different competencies for different classes. For example, this year, Maggie Connor sat in for commercial photography, and Tajah Robinson Whitaker sat in for cosmetology. I had to think for a minute. But they had to use their voice, and they were able to work with other members around the state who also offer these programs in ways that we can adjust competencies, create new ones, revise old ones, and ensure that we're still at the top of our game here in Manassas. So I love it when our teachers get invited to go down and do those things. I want to take a minute and talk about our credentialing opportunities and our dual enrollment. So we offer 11 credentialing exams this year to students. These are aligned with a career pathway. These are approved by V D O E. V D O E sends a list. This year, it was a little late. It came this spring, but they revise their pathway, or their credentialing approved list with us, and we use that list as guidance. These credentialing opportunities are supported by industry. For example, OSHA. OSHA 10 is well-received by our construction companies in the field. And some of our students have even gotten a raise, up to $2, for having their OSHA license. And so we're excited about that. And these credentials are also offered through a CTE class, so students that are involved in a Level 2 or above course. We do not give credentialing exams on Level 1 classes. Those are introductory, and it's, again, still that little piece of exploratory. And so when they get to Level 2 is when we really hone in on the credentialing exams. Dual enrollment opportunities, we have E M T 1 and 2. We have automotive technology, 1, 2, and 3. Teachers for Tomorrow, 1 and 2. Business Management and Entrepreneurship. And so we do offer options for students in CTE for dual enrollment. Our career technical student organizations, you've probably heard the CTSO verbiage. We have HOSA, which is our Health Occupation Student Association. DECA, which is our Marketing Students Organization. FBLA is Business. Skills USA, as you heard tonight, wide range and is really open to all CTE programs, and robotics. And so those offer students an opportunity for enrichment after the regular school day. Oftentimes, a student will also experience some of the competencies and the goals of the student organization through their regular class. Work-based learning. I love pictures. They speak volumes. Look at the smiles on their faces. Look at how excited they are. Although I did have to pull a few smiles out of our students working on the shed. But you'll see some great photos here of all of our students engaged throughout the city of Manassas. And so you can see our CNAs there. We have our dental assistant up there who was, went through the Grow Manassas program and got her dental radiation certification last summer. And thanks to Mr. Godwin, we were able to place her this year in a dental office. Our students who don't always have transportation, we still want to offer them an opportunity to do work-based learning. And so you'll see the gentleman and Ms. Whitaker and Ms. Easton and Mr. Weaver in front of the shed. These students built a shed last year, which we donated to our community garden. And so we offer the experience right at the school building, and then they were able to go over and help deliver that. So exciting. All right. Work-based learning. Partnerships. Key to everything. But I stand before you exceptionally proud of this percentage this year. We are at 85% of the 2025 senior class to complete a high-quality work-based learning. This is no small feat. We have grown by leaps and bounds. I have a phenomenal team, who I'll thank a little bit down the road, but many of our students have engaged in at least one, if not two, high-quality work-based learning experiences. And in order for this to happen, business partners are absolutely critical to the success of the program. We would not have these numbers if it weren't support of our community. They're committed to our students, they engage in experiences, and invest in our future workforce. The businesses have built a partnership with us that are based on communication, trust, and goodwill, and it shows. We work very hard and we work well together to make sure that it's a win-win for both sides. And I do want to highlight our two students over here on my right. Ms. Bland is a product of work-based learning. She completed all of her clinical hours this year for CNA. Yay! And Ms. Breeden, who's had several internships with Manassas City and has grown by leaps and bounds. So congratulations to both of you young ladies. We're very proud of them. So work-based learning and growth. And so thanks to our work-based learning coordinator, specialist, Eric Godwin, you will see the numbers from 2022, 23, 23, 24, and 24, 25. Three years ago, we had a very soft start offering work-based learning at Osborne High School. We formalized that in year two, and here you see year three. You'll notice currently, we are projecting the following totals for high-quality work-based learning. Now I say projecting, we are well on our way, but as Mr. Godwin completes 10 to 12 sheets of paper for every one of these students in work-based learning, they're still finishing up and getting loaded. But I feel very confident that I can share these with you. So we currently have over 230 students that have completed an internship. Over 60 students have completed clinical experience hours. Over 380 students have completed a school-based enterprise. School-based enterprise is our automotive program where you bring your car in or cosmetology. 450 students plus have completed service learning. This is a huge accomplishment. We hear from our business partners that our students need soft skills. They need to be ready for workplace readiness. They need to look you in the eye, shake your hand, be confident, ask questions when needed, and show that they're ready. All of these students are leaving our care in a much better position because we've been able to support them with those workplace readiness skills. It's a process, right? And we continue that process, and we continue to support our kids and believe in them. You will notice a shift in experiences as you're looking at the graph. There's fewer service learning experiences and a higher level of internships this year. That is due to our Career Strategies class this year for seniors. Okay? In the Career Strategies class, I'll talk about that in a second, but it's a different approach. And so it's a lot more guided, and it's a lot more purposeful in giving the students the support that they need. We do also offer, now the ones I mentioned are high-quality work-based learning experiences. The state does not recognize all work-based learning as high-quality, and so I do want you to know that. We do offer mentoring and job shadowing. We realize how important that is. We continue to do it, but the state does not look at that as high-quality. So students engaged in work-based learning, we have two young people at the Kuma Foundation, which is the Georgetown South Computer Lab. So we're excited about that. That's a new partnership this year. We have our adaptive P E student, or our adaptive students who are doing True by Hilton, and so they help with folding the sheets, making the beds, and vacuuming. And Eric Godwin got to go see them the other day, all smiles. So that's exciting. We also have some students working at Goodwill here in Manassas, and then a number of our students are out in the field in food service throughout Manassas City. So chances are pretty good, if you see a young person when you're shopping and out and about, they're one of ours. So feel free to encourage them and give them a little bit of love, and let them know how proud we are of them. So return on investment. Our business partners support us in so many different ways, and you'll notice that our scrubs are sponsored by four different businesses, as well as our E M T shirts. We have Women in Trade speakers who continuously come in each month and talk to a group of students who are interested in a possible career path. Just this past year, we had the HVAC come in and talk to our students. We had over 40 students who signed up on their own to come and listen to a speaker. They were amazing. They asked phenomenal questions. They were invested in the equipment, and they loved hearing about a typical day, what a salary is, what type of education do I need? We also have a lot of involvement in the city through our committees that we sit in on, from the Prince William Chamber Education and Workforce Committee to the City of Manassas Business Committee, and then just a wide range of other things. We do try our best to be a good partner. Each year, we do our best to, you'll see on the left there, it says sustaining our partnership and growing together. We provide these for our business partners, and we talk a little bit about the impact that they've made on our students and how appreciative we are of those. So those do go out each year. We're getting better. We started slow, but we're really gaining speed on those. So I know this year, we're going to get them all. And then, of course, we have the job fair. We also hosted a blood drive through our HOSA, our Career Technical Student Organization. And so we are grateful for all those partnerships. But we couldn't do it without them. We absolutely couldn't. They're amazing. You would be so proud of each and every one of them. So some highlights. We got some squash growing. Our community garden over at Metz was extremely generous with the squash and the edamame this year. And so we were excited to share those with our students over at Metz. We worked with our Family and Consumer Sciences program, and many of the students actually got to use them in the cooking classes. And so they were well received. This year, I know that Ms. Easton has already been over and been planting, especially with our adaptive students. They planted the little seedlings, and they're taking off already, so we're excited to have them there. But our community garden continues to grow and flourish. We have our leadership students who've gone over, and they are ready to paint the shed this year, and so we're looking forward to having that done by the end of the school year. New this year was CTE ambassadors, and many of you may have stopped at one of the career days at one of our elementary schools or intermediate school. We had our seniors in our Career Strategies class serve as CTE ambassadors and talk to students about a variety of different career paths. Each and every one created hands-on activities for the kids, and so they were really excited. I have hundreds of pictures, but I just chose one of the cute ones. And then Career Strategies. And again, I want to talk a little bit about it. This is a new class this year. We have nine sections of Career Strategies. It is for seniors. Some of our seniors, well, let me back up a sec. So Career Strategies, quarter one, we have the students stay on site, work with the teacher, and work on soft skills. They create resumes, they practice interviewing, they dress for success. They also interview. Sometimes an employer will want to Zoom interview, and so we support them on some of those interviews right in the classroom with the teacher. Sometimes an employer will want to Zoom interview, and so we support them on some of those interviews right in the classroom with the teacher. And then quarter two and three, if students have secured a job and they're ready to go out into the workforce, then they can work second, second and third quarter. And then fourth quarter, we bring them back home. We talk about what they learned. We talk about the gaps, the strengths, the challenges, and we help them work through those. And then they complete, complete a mini capstone project on their experience. And so just gathering all that up from top to bottom and ensuring that they're ready to go. But it's been very successful this year and we're looking forward to next year continuing that. CTE success stories. It was so perfect about a week and a half ago. Mr. Schmicki, some of you know him. He is our thirty-four-plus-year veteran engineering teacher. Got a phone call out of the clear blue from a gentleman by the name of Michael Wenzinger. And Michael took his class and graduated way back in two thousand and five. He wrote Mr. Schmicki a very nice email after the conversation, and I included some of it in here. We don't, I won't read it to you. I'll let you read that. But his class was the first time that he actually really tried to apply himself. And so that's exciting. Those are the wins that teachers get, not always right after the class, but twenty years later, he comes back to say, wow, you made such a difference. And not only did he say, you made such a difference in my life, how can I give back? So I have a list. We're going to check. Daniel Lave, also UVA Health. He is one of our CNA students who never thought that this would be an option for him. And so I happily share his story that he got into a nurse aid program, was certified, and it became the opportunity of a lifetime. And so he now has a full-time job with UVA Health over right here on Liberia, no, Sudli. And he plans to get a nursing degree and become a registered nurse. He will be the first one in his family to go to college. So that's such a huge win. And on that note, I do want to publicly thank each and every one of our CTE teachers. They are incredible. I could not do what they do every day. They are so committed. They are tireless. They give, they give back. They support our students. They have those phone calls. They have the tough conversations. They give tough love when it's needed, right? But they keep them together, they keep them in the fold, and they make sure that every one of them in their classes is successful. All right. I'm almost done. What's ahead, right? Got to talk about what's coming up. So Ms. Spall won't be surprised to see the aviation career exploration as she's been a very staunch supporter of our relationship with Manassas Regional Airport. But next year, hopefully for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, we will be implementing an aviation-focused work-based learning for our students. So we're very, very excited to see where that leads us. We have a lot of meetings ahead of us. We're going to sell it, and I have no doubt that they'll be happy to answer with a yes. Three E framework. We know that the Virginia Board of Education is making some changes. Some of those changes will put some challenges in front of us for our work-based learning, but we're ready for those and we'll spend some time this summer reorganizing and regrouping and continuing to do what's best for our kids. So we're excited about those. Pathway extension. One of the things that we're going to focus on this coming school year in twenty-five, twenty-six is exploring pathways or offering students opportunities in pathways that we don't currently offer at the school. We offer eleven out of seventeen pathways. We're at capacity, but we, we know that there's other interests that are out there. So things like the aviation career exploration, things like bringing in HVAC, welding, electrical, some of those types of career paths that we don't offer in the building, but still opening up students' eyes to what the possibility could be. So our focus will be making a real concerted, purposeful effort in making sure that we have those opportunities for kids. Courses next year, we have two new courses. One is advanced coding, which we're very excited about. It's the second-level coding class, and that's, that'll be a great addition. The other one is more video E-driven, and they've requested a prerequisite for the architectural drawing class, which is called technical drawing. And so technical, probably telling me to stop talking. Technical drawing is the prereq and it's more of a foundation class. And then the second level would be architectural drawing. And so next year, all students will go right into the technical drawing class. And then where are they now? I really want to know where all of our kids are at. I want to know the impact. I want to know the challenges. I want to know how we can help them better. And so we will have a very focused effort in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year in collecting data. So once I came on board four years ago, or almost four years ago, I'm just a month or two shy here. It went fast. I have been collecting data from our graduating seniors. And so we will use that data with a Qualtrics program and our partnership here with our data folks here at Central Office to gather some information so that next year at this time, I can tell you what our kids are doing, where they're at. We can follow them. And so definitely is something I've wanted to do for a while, so I'm excited to have that on our plate. And then last but not least, our CTE team, right? The amazing Tara Easton and Eric Godwin. And I just want to take a moment to thank both of them because without them, they do all this work behind the scenes. Sometimes you see Eric Godwin, but lots of times you do not see Tara Easton. Tara Easton flies under the radar and she works her tail off. And she's amazing, absolutely amazing. She does our credentialing exams. She does all of the curriculum and development and ensuring that our teachers have the appropriate resources that they need. And she's a whiz at money, which I love. So I'm very, very grateful for Ms. Easton over there. And a sincere appreciation for Mr. Godwin as well. When I say there's ten to twelve pieces of paper for every single student in work-based learning, he has touched every single one of those. That's incredible, absolutely incredible. And not only does he do that, but he goes out to make new business partnerships for us. And those two are the glue that keep me together, and so we can do all that we do. So a very sincere thank you to my team. But my last thank you actually goes to the school board. And I say this with genuine sincerity. Everywhere that we go, you're there. I see you everywhere. I see you at meetings. I see you at the job fair. I see you at today when we were out supporting our Special Olympics, right? Everything we do is touched by the school board. And I do want to say thank you. Your commitment, sometimes I wonder how you keep up, right? Every time I turn around, it's posted on social media that you've been here, 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 and here, right? Every time we've needed anything, anytime I've come to any one of you, you have been unbelievably supportive for what I do at the school and for our students. And so I do want to send a very heartfelt thank you for your tireless nights, for the time that you spent supporting our kids. But not only supporting our students, but just in general, supporting CTE. I, I am so proud to be here in Manassas and have you by my side. I could go a lot of different places, right? I have a commute that is a beast. I spend about fifteen hours a week in the car commuting, but every day is worth it, every day. I know that this, Manassas City Public Schools is a family. I know it's not perfect, but I can't thank you enough for being so supportive to get to perfect, right? Yeah. So I do want to say thank you. And then, of course, I have a great boss and I have a great team at Central Office, and I have just all goodness all the way around. And so just truly, truly grateful to be able to stand in front of you today and very humbled to have had this opportunity. And at that, I will stop talking.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Tara Easton, and thank you, Eric Godwin. You do make a great team and we're very proud of you. We're very proud to support CTE. Are there any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Miles?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions and I, I had them listed and you answered a lot of them. But as far as businesses go, how would they be able to participate in the CTE program if they were looking at this and they're like, oh, we want to be a participant? What would they need to do?
Oh, I love that question. I hope they're listening. So there are so many ways. Some of it is, well, I'll back up a little second. I'm going to encourage every single business partner to take a risk and trust the process, right? Take a risk and trust the process. And so it's a big leap for businesses to host an intern, right? But we have over a hundred businesses this year that agreed to host an intern. So we could do work-based learning, right? Internships, guest speakers, field trips. We have a lot of business partners that offer to host field trips. We have a lot of business partners who might be a little bit smaller here in the city, and they've offered to do job shadowing. We have a career carousel coming up, which is focused on our students who have an IEP or 504 or in our adaptive program. And Mr. Godwin is, is organizing that this summer. So it's a two-day job shadowing and workplace readiness program. But we've had businesses come out and they're willing to be a guest speaker or get the kids excited or host a little information session or teach them how to shake hands, right? And so business partners, if it's too much like time-wise and they don't necessarily have it, we're always willing to accept donations, right? So we do have sponsors for scrubs. We have sponsors for our Women in Trades Lunch and Learn. And so if there's a way that they feel they can give back to our community, maybe not with time or personnel, but they're willing to make a donation, we're always happy. We're always happy. And if you see, I left my email on there and my phone number. That's a great question.
Okay, so you already talked about looking forward as to the other things that you want to offer in the fall. I, I wanted to ask another question about the list of businesses. Because you mentioned we had a hundred. It would be great to see the list, you know, just so that we can kind of see, oh, wow, I didn't know that we partnered with them.
We'd be happy to show that.
I think that would be great.
We can definitely do that. And that way, if you're out and about too, and you could say thank you to them, that's a great little positive.
Yes.
That would be great, yeah.
I just want to say it was a great presentation. Thanks for presenting tonight and for all your hard work with our students to prepare them for the world after high school. One thing I really love to see that we're adding the mandatory career investigations, of course, I believe for seventh and eighth graders?
It's seventh and eighth grades. They'll have to take it once before they get to Osborne High School. So they can either take it in seventh grade or eighth grade. And that is the class where the academic and career plan will be done, completed.
I love that. And I think it's also awesome that we're connecting our students with area businesses we talked about. But the one thing that stood out to me is how we're also offering training to teachers so they can provide CTE opportunities for our Ls and also for our sped students. And then the career strategy sounds like a wonderful program for our seniors. Like, I loved how you talked about how we're working on soft skills first and then helping them find jobs. I mean, that's just so important. And so I just wanted to make sure to mention those things. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Looking down to my right, Mrs. Stevens?
Not a question, but as I was listening to you speak, I thought about when I was first elected to the board. One of the big complaints of public education was that we're not preparing our students for lives after high school, to be productive adults in society. We're not teaching them those soft skills. And what I've heard tonight says, yes, we are in fact really doing that and we're getting them ready to be productive members of society when they graduate, whether they choose to go to college, technical school, or go straight to work. So this is a very promising thing, and I'm so glad you joined us four years ago because I think a difference is really being made now. And I look forward to seeing as the program, as the CTE program grows and develops over the years and what things can be added. So thank you.
Thank you. Looking to my left, any questions?
I just want you to, thank you so much for presenting tonight. You know, this is one of my love languages, CTE. But you mentioned Grow Manassas, and I know what that is, but I never get tired of hearing it. And perhaps some others that may not have heard about Grow Manassas may benefit from hearing it tonight.
Yeah. So Grow Manassas is a program that is funded through the city of Manassas, and many of our students and staff have taken advantage of it. If you live in the two zero one one zero zip code, they offer a wide range of certifications across the board. Some are career-related, others of them might be something that they could use to impact, like, for example, a teacher could impact their current teaching by getting some additional experience or information with that. And so like I mentioned, our student last summer who got the dental x-ray, and she did it on her own. She was sixteen years old, and now we have her placed in a, in a dental office. But Grow Manassas is, if you check out the Northern Virginia Community College website.
Please do.
We have actually worked very hard this, about a year ago, to add thirty additional items to that list. And so we've been working with Patrick Small at the city as well as Dr. Lynch to expand the offerings. And I think we will continue to work on those to add additional ones. But there's quite a few options, so definitely check it out. It's well worth it. And there's no charge for those.
Thank you. And one more thing, I saw your numbers for mentorship or mentors, and it's low.
It is.
Is, are there any plans to make that a little bit more robust? Do we need more ideas? I was a mentor in another district that had a very effective program, one that I enjoy, so I'm wondering.
I think you might be volunteering, Ms. Brown.
I, I love mentoring, but yes.
Interesting, actually, Ms. Breschius' husband is actually serving as a mentor to our students this year. So a little bit of transparency, about two years ago, we tried a mentoring, two, uh, three years ago, I apologize, three years ago, we tried, we started a mentoring program. It was a big flop. We didn't do it right. We didn't, we thought we had a great bones. We thought we were ready to go, but we learned a lot of lessons along the way. So the next year, we paused. We regrouped, we reorganized, we got some training. And then this year, we started fresh. We started again this year. And so the students that were, that are currently is mentees were suggested by their counselor or a school teacher, one of the teachers at the school. And then we sat and we talked to them and we had a parent meeting and we had a student meeting to explain the program because parent involvement is important and we want to make sure that they're partners with us as well as, as well as parenting their child, right? And so this year has been still another year of growth. We have still learned a lot along the way. We have a number of our students who have moved away or transferred to adult ed or the alternative program or that sort of thing. And so we, we have lost some students. We've also lost some business partners. And I think mentoring is a commitment and for, for both parties. And so we're still working through that. And I think this summer, as we do our planning and CTE creates their strategic plan that we want to focus on in our initiatives, that will definitely be at the table.
Yeah, thanks. Mrs. Breschius?
Thank you so much for this presentation. I will say I have always appreciated your passion and your energy, how you always have a smile on your face. And now learning for the first time tonight that you commute fifteen hours every week and you are still bringing that energy and still bringing that smile, still bringing that passion. It's incredible. Thank you so much for choosing us, for all the places you could go, for choosing us. Thank you so much for that. I want to offer first a testimonial. One of the early slides was about the STEM nights. Those are a huge hit in my house. We love them.
Yay!
And the exposure is to various engineering-type programs and, you know, the little micron dog that came in and visited Baldwin at one point. My child has, she's just taking it for granted that she will grow up and design robots one day. Like, she's just like, well, that's obviously what we do here in Manassas. We grow up and design robots. So it's really the, I can personally testify to the early education. I did have some questions for slide seventeen, your what's ahead slide. So the aviation career exploration, the aviation work-based learning, is this with the airport itself or is it with airlines or contractors there?
That's a great question. So we are reaching out to partners who either have a, some type of commitment to Manassas City Airport, the Manassas Regional Airport. And so if they have a, and the word is going to escape me, what do you call them? Hangar, thank you. I knew Eric would know. A hangar out at the airport. We're reaching out to everyone who has a hangar at the airport. But there's also some businesses that they connect with that are not present at the airport, but locally, they're there. And so there's about thirty-three businesses that we are connecting with. So this is a shared partnership with Manassas City, Manassas Park, and Prince William. And so each of us have taken eleven of the businesses and we're reaching out here in May to meet with them and reel them in.
Go get them.
Yeah.
The other, so the other questions I had, the pathway extensions, you mentioned some great stuff, getting kids exposed to, you know, the six pathways that we don't have. But how, like, how, because we can't, we're at capacity. So what, I didn't fully understand what you, what the vision was.
Yeah. So one of the examples that we used this year is Boland came in. And we would like to increase the participation of business. And we would like to increase the participation of businesses in our community that can support students in a pathway we don't normally have, or not normally, but we don't have the capacity for. So, Boland does HVAC. We have, we had over forty students attend that are interested in HVAC. So, we had them come in and speak, they brought their vans, the kids got to check them out. And then, they also came to, like, our job fair, they'll also be there at Career and Conversation Day. And so, we want to increase exposure for students to engage in conversations with the different career paths that we don't have.
Gotcha. Okay, so it's not so much like trying to offer any kind of class or anything like that?
No, if we had an eighteen-year-old, they could go into an apprenticeship program. So, some of our seniors do turn eighteen in the fall, and in which case, we could place them in an apprenticeship prior to graduation.
Gotcha. Speaking of graduation, that was my third question to that slide. So, collecting the data on what is, what is happening with our kids after they graduate. So, are we envisioning a survey? Is this a poll from the counselor's database in terms of who's going where? Like, what kind of data are we talking about?
So, we're envisioning a survey sent out. We have a, we purchase a program called Qualtrics through our Perkins Grant to support data from businesses, schools, parents, students, the community, and we'll cull that data and use that to make some informed decisions. So, I envision a survey being posted out for all of our stakeholders. And so, we can, not, you know, we want to know where our students are, but we also want to know where our community is. Have you hired one of our kids? Are they still working there? What were the strengths that that child brought to the table, right? Those types of things. So, I think those would all be really good things to know when we go to make future decisions.
That's great. I love to hear, I love data, we love data, we love surveys, this is a survey school board. So, I can't wait to hear how that goes. I'll say, I did attend the career fair that you put on yesterday. Of course, I saw you there, and the feedback from the businesses was very positive, and somebody did specifically say, like, we've got great eye contact and great handshakes and great resumes. And I really think that the courses that we've been offering have, are really making a difference in our young people, and maybe the no-cellphone policy, too. But, so I want to put that testimony out there as well. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Vice Chair Spall?
Hi, I've got gobs of notes here. I'll see if I can read them. Number one, I just want to say how super proud I am of the aviation career exploration that we're working on. It's going to be a really cool thing to see it come to fruition. I love the work that the CTE Advisory Committee is doing and watching those ideas come to fruition. I love learning about the outcomes of the Perkins Grant and the ability to survey our students. I, myself, was a DECA officer in high school. I don't think you and I have ever talked about that before, but it made a profound impact on me, and it's one of my favorite subjects still. I want to make sure everybody heard, you know, that we are offering eleven of seventeen VDOE pathways in our one tiny high school in the city. We have no one to share it with, it's just us, and we're making it happen. My favorite thing about tonight is that you're going to follow up with students. I know it's a huge extra thing to put on your plate, and I would have never asked you to do it, but I feel like it's really important to show current students where former students have landed, because it makes success feel real and attainable. Alumni stories highlight the value of education and offer motivation, direction, and a clearer view of life beyond graduation. They also build pride and strengthen the connection between students and their community, our community. Thank you to the entire CTE department for both developing and then tracking or planning to track student outcomes. And I do have one tiny question, well, suggestion. Let's just leave it at suggestion. I've seen recently some pretty stellar use of QR codes, and I wonder if maybe you might be able to impress upon some of the teachers and students to use QR codes just to show us a snippet of life inside school while it's happening. Short, brief, but it could be really cool, so. Oh, well, if it's part of...
Maybe CTSOs.
We could figure something out. It's a cool little window that maybe we might be able to use. Well, I forgot about NOSA, so, sorry. Thank you. Thank you for all you're doing.
And I'll close it out here. I'm really glad you're doing the Where Are They Now? I know some students that might be able to contribute to that. And something that the board talks about a lot is telling our story. And we were at JM High School in Fredericksburg last year, and they had small posters on the wall with QR codes that said, you know, "Check it out." And it was like a video of a young man that had graduated JM and went on to get, study business and opened his restaurants, and now he has several restaurants, and he employs lots of JM students. So, I know things like that are happening, but I would like to be able to tell our story better. And sometimes that's through video, sometimes just getting out there, and I know that you're providing a lot of that information, but thank you for doing the Where Are They Now?
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay.
All right.
I think that's it. Onto our next item on the agenda is facilities and maintenance. Now, Mrs. Spall had said her favorite thing tonight, but Mr. Hilton hasn't even presented yet. Mr. Russ Hilton, Director of Facilities and Maintenance, will provide an update on the construction of the new Jenny Dean Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. My name, oh, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Spall, members of the board, Dr. Casada. My name is Russ Hilton. I'm the Director of Facilities and Maintenance tonight. I'm presenting the March report from our partners, construction management firm, Skanska. For the month of March, we've had a lot of activity. We're starting to see a lot of progress. We've had very good weather. If you were to visit the job site, you'll start seeing the building foundation coming out of the ground. We have lots of concrete and masonry. The trades are starting to come in on the backside of the school. We're starting to add sewer pipe and water piping for the main utilities. Things are moving forward, and we are tracking on time. Moving on, we have some pictures of building materials, some masonry and some concrete, machines that they use to mix and pour. You'll see some footers, and very exciting, now we can see some things coming out of the ground. So, as we move forward, we have good weather, we are going to continue to track on time.
Awesome.
That concludes my update for the month of March.
Any questions or comments from the board? I know we're getting these regularly now, but not down here? Down left?
Thank you.
Oh, Mrs. Spall?
Yes, favorite words are progress, on time, dean, and I never thought I'd be so excited about sewers.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hilton. Our next item is policies, and I'll go to Mrs. Stevens, the Chair of our Policy Committee, for that.
Thank you. As I said, the Policy Committee met on April tenth to discuss model policy updates from the VSBA, the Virginia School Board Association. Thirty-one policies were discussed. The majority had cross-references and or legal citations updated, or the verbiage was changed slightly to be more in line with other policies. I did want to just point out a few policies. J E C B, this policy is not new, but was updated and relates to admissions of non-public students for part-time enrollment in MCPS. There were two options MCPS has adopted, and that was not at this meeting, but previously. Option one, that authorizes part-time enrollment of students not attending MCPS or who are homeschooled. Second one I wanted to discuss was originally a policy that was modified for MCPS. It's B B B B, Student Representative to the School Board. It requires the superintendent to create a regulation to address procedures related to the appointment of student representatives. When the VSBA updated it, it now fell in line with our modified policy, so our policy will no longer be modified. And I wanted to draw a little bit of attention to a new policy that, when you first hear of it, you kind of have a question or two in your head. J H D A dash M, the M means it's modified, is a new policy to MCPS, and it relates to human research. And I know when you first think human research, you know, your eyebrows might raise a little bit. Human research in the terms of surveys, analyses, and evaluations of students. And I highlighted what I need you to know, if you're concerned about this, that such research will be conducted or authorized only after the student and the student's parents or legally authorized representative give their informed consent, as evidenced by a sign and witness informed consent in accordance with Virginia Code. In addition, all instructional materials, including teacher manuals, films, tapes, or other supplementary material, which will be used in connection with any such survey, analysis, or evaluation, will be available for inspection by the parents or guardians of the students involved. So, any kind of research that's done, and this is research that involves evaluating, may involve evaluating students, completing surveys, doing observations, will not be conducted without specific parent consent, and parents will have the opportunity to review any and all materials related to that research before the research starts. And essentially, that was the policies. It's not as exciting as Ms. Taylor's presentation was, or Mr. Hilton's presentation was, because policies are not very pictorial or interesting as we get into them. But if anyone has any questions?
Seeing and hearing none. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, now we have some unfinished business. School Board operating protocols, and we'll go to Mrs. Bresch, who is Chair of the Board Development Committee.
Thank you. Let me find my paper. There's a lot of paper up here. Okay, nope, that's the wrong paper. Oh, my gosh, where did it go? Here it is. Okay. So, we have had many meetings on this topic, but I think we are able to, I think we are, we're very close. I just wanted to, the draft posted, everybody has been able to read, everyone will be able to offer their comments on it. I do want to make one suggestion, Section Four, Public Comments Protocols, that we move the second paragraph. Individuals or groups may address the school board for longer than three minutes. This section was developed, we did have a gentleman come who was interested in discussing, you know, uses of the old Dean Building. We didn't really have a place to put him. I'm suggesting that we move this from Section Four to Section Five, Work Sessions. Just a copy-paste situation. So, that is, and I've talked to most of you about that, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it. You have one? Nope, you're good? Okay.
I just, this is, okay, this is my first time hearing this, so I haven't been able to process it, but I thought that the work sessions were for different... Are we now saying that constituents can come and present to us on a regular basis on work sessions? Is that what we're proposing?
If you have some kind of proposal or partnership to share, like, for example, we had the example with the old Dean Building, you know, a gentleman had a, you know, a nonprofit that he wanted to partner with us, try to develop that into a CTE center. We didn't really have a way to give him that space, and so, this is a way to give him that space. The original proposal was to put it in a regular meeting, but since we have reworked what is going where, you know, like, school, individual school board members under this protocol are putting, we are putting our presentations in the work session as well. And so, the idea is that...
But we haven't voted on that yet.
No, we have not voted on. And we will have an opportunity to comment on that, too, if you'd like. But that is a suggestion, just so we have any kind of movement, anything that requires processing, right? So, if somebody comes, like, for example, yesterday, I was at the career fair, and there were some people, proprietors of barber shops there, they wanted to talk to us about barbering, and they said, is there a way that we can, yeah, that we can come, give you some of, you know, the whole school board some ideas about how we can partner with you and, you know, barbering? And I said, very soon. We might have something, an opportunity for you very soon. But I would see something where they would come, develop their proposal, come to our work session, and if we decide to proceed, we can give the guidance to, you know, our staff members, Dr. Newman or whomever would be in charge of developing that partnership, to then give us a, you know, later update in the context of a regular meeting, similar to what would happen to any member-generated item.
And it does say, the superintendent has a discretion to determine whether a requested topic from an individual or group is relevant to Manassas City Public Schools. So, I like that.
I'm just concerned that this work sessions are becoming a little bit of a burden, because now, it's not just members, because we're not allowed to put things on the general agenda. So, now, we now have to compete with outside presenters to get our issues elevated or addressed. That's my concern, but I'll digress at this point.
I, I understand. You and I share very similar concerns about the balance between the regular meeting and the work session. I would support, you know, having a later conversation on this topic, finding a way to broadcast or livestream or post what is happening in the work session, since we have changed a lot about what the work sessions are and what we're accomplishing there. You know, it's only fair to be clear, is my eight pillars of trust, clear with people? So, I would, I would, I would support that. And I don't, you know, I do want to find a way to hear from people, personally speaking just as myself, who are, you know, graduates of our old barber program and who want to try to get something new going. You know, I do want to make space for those folks and the gentlemen with the foundation who wanted to come work with us on old Dean, right? Like, you know, I think that they're, I, you know, I am interested in doing that. I understand your concerns and respect.
Yes, but I've been duly elected, and I also need a space. And so, I'm very concerned about all of these. But since we're proposing things, then if we are not to put things on the agenda, but just go through the work sessions, can that be a choice from any board member, that they can choose whether or not they would like to elevate a concern or issue on the regular agenda? Or if they choose to work it through the work session, could that be a proposal or revision under this process? Since we propose a new thing?
Yeah, of course, we're here discussing. It's a discussion time, so your discussion is welcome.
That way would be my choice, and I still will have some choice or some ability to bring up anything that I believe is important.
So, to, to clarify, so that everybody understands the question, the proposal that's being forward, want to make sure everyone understands. You would like the Agenda Section to, Section Three, the Agenda Section, to reflect that it is up to the originating member to decide whether to discuss first a work session or first at a regular meeting. So, that is the question. I can offer my thoughts, but I don't know, I want to give, I don't want to, like, you know, I want to give other board members an opportunity, or I can go, I can just keep talking.
I would just say that because it's only a fifteen-minute, I believe fifteen minutes that they get, that that wouldn't, you know, break away from what we're going to discuss. Perhaps we could discuss maybe having only two per meeting, so that way it doesn't take away from our discussion, so we put a cap on it, you know? So, that way, no one feels like their voice isn't heard.
That's a good idea, Dana.
I was, um, go ahead. You first.
Moving the public comments, for anyone who would like to speak for more than three minutes, and then, Ms. Brown's question, would this create additional burden for work sessions? I think those are things we definitely need to think about. I would like to think about them before making any decisions. We've had many conversations about work sessions and about agendas, and I feel like every time we have a meeting, something new is added, or a different option is proposed. So, I think those are things that need to be, that I need to think on.
Dr. Jones was first.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I think we discussed last week that we would bring things, the board would bring things to the work session. I don't think it's appropriate to change that tonight, so, I mean, if we're not going to go what we said, I think we need to go back to the John Board. But I think it's not a decision that you made abruptly for tonight. And I also liked Mrs. Miles' suggestion that there be a limit, or maybe you only have people come from the public, you know, on a certain, every quarter or something. But I do think, I don't think that, if we're making big changes, I don't think that should be done tonight.
Okay. And it's just time for discussion tonight, so we're just talking... And it's just done for discussion tonight, so we're just talking about it? And Ms. Brezha, you had something you wanted to say?
That was, number one, like, this is, we are, this is for discussion, and we can keep the draft as it is. We can, we're here discussing the proposal to, you know, cut and paste where public comment goes. I will say, and I want to, you know, say to my board members here, say to anyone in the public who has either watched the, who came to our work session or has since listened to it, I did make an error in not bringing this up then. I'm, I'm sorry that, that this was something new that the committee recommended, and I didn't draw the groups, it was written down, I didn't draw the groups' attention to it, and that was my bad as a proctor, so I'm sorry for, sorry, you know, sorry for that. It's definitely no sneak attack intended. But here we are. I wanted to, you know, in terms of, you know, so I'm, I think it is, if we, if the balance of the board has decided that things get their first, that substantive measures get their first hearing in a work session, that that's where the public, that that's where, you know, any presentations for partnerships would come in. So, I, I support the cut and paste. I do have some hesitancy about giving a choice there, just because I think that it's better to just pick one and perfect one version. Now, I will say, in state it for the record, I said it in the work session, but I'll say it here, I do, I am, if, on a personal level, in favor of putting the substantive items on a regular meeting first and then moving it to a work session. That's where we've spent all of our time. Where do things go first? Do they go to the regular meeting first, or do they go to the work session first? The balance of the board has decided its work session. I personally, if it was, you know, if I had, if I had my own personal school board, I would write it the other way, but that's not how that goes, and so, that's how this draft came about, and so, I do plan to support it, even though I do have some hesitancy about it. And I hope that we can get, I hope that we can get there.
Thank you, Ms. Brezha. Vice Chair Spall?
Yes, would you like to go first? Well, I just want to say for the record that I cannot support the proposed protocols. Since I arrived in January, there was a lack of clarity, consistency, and procedural transparency. This is a fundamental violation of governance norms for any board member to be denied the ability to place an item on the regular agenda. The agenda is not the property of any one individual or subgroup, or the power of four. It is a procedural tool through which this body fulfills public duties, deliberate, advocates, and takes action. I've questioned these protocols. As, as I mentioned, they contain a significant amount of subjective language, which has resulted and continues to result in a lack of clarity. I offered refinements initially, just to make sure that we could all read and understand what was being prescribed as the process for all board members to follow. I was told that the more right thing to do was to sign and adopt, and adopt them as written. I disagree. My objection to the lack of clarity to these protocols and my proposed refinements have come at a personal cost in the form of attacks to my character and my intentions, but despite, despite this tactics, to deflect from the core, I would like to reiterate tonight that we are seven equal voting members, whether you're Latina, white, black, Democrat, Independent, or Republican, each one of us have a legal and ethical right to request that matters be placed on the regular agenda, and that right must be protected and safeguarded, safeguarded without procedural obstruction. So, I would remain committed to upholding the principles of a fair process and equal representation. If the protocols are voted as is in May, and if these work sessions continue to be the only in principle vehicle for any board member to discuss or elevate matters for discussion, then I'm asking for us to consider and to make sure that we stream live these work sessions. We have a duty to be transparent with all constituents.
Vice Chair?
I just want to say that I sincerely appreciate the school board members of this committee for their dedication to reviewing and refining our operating protocols. Their leadership supports transparency, accountability, and student success, which is helping to move our district and community forward. I'm not prepared to discuss the changes tonight necessarily, although I'm liking the change to the draft, and I want, I guess, on the record that I do support the work session idea, and I, I think that it would be nice to be able to give it a chance, because it really is still very much in its infancy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Spall. So, Mrs. Brezha, you will make the change?
So, this is, I'm glad you're asking. I was, because I was going to ask, so, do I want to, so, I can develop for our next meeting basic, because we discussed, so I can edit this if it, if everybody is comfortable with the cut and paste I talked about from public comment to work session, but I wasn't clear that everybody was okay with that, so, if that's okay, then I'll go ahead and do that, and I don't know how everyone felt about the limit to two speakers as well.
Yeah, and I mean, really, and this is just historical data I'm sharing, we have not had, this has not been used generally.
It's not, right, it's not, it's not been...
It's been used once this year.
Right.
Shouldn't this go back to the committee that is working on this?
We can, we can put it back to the committee, and then it goes on action?
Well, I'm, I'm just asking for procedural purposes, because everything gets twisted here, so I'm just trying to follow. We proposed two changes tonight.
Yes.
It appears that we have support for one change, but one of the people on the committee has concerns, so I'm not sure if this should go back to committee and then propose again, or if this is just going to be pushed through a vote next month.
I agree with Ms. Brown, and, and one of the things that she said was, we need to ensure that our work, that we streamline our work sessions, and ensure that they don't become too burdensome, or, what was the word? How they, to ensure that they don't become a burden, and school board member initiatives would end up competing with outside sources. So, I would like to discuss that, and I think it would be, in my perspective, a wise choice to bring this back to the committee and discuss that, because we do need to make sure that, number one, work sessions do not become too bulky and burdensome, and that our constituents, members of the community, the citizens of the city of Manassas, have an opportunity, if we're adding more to work sessions, to access the work sessions, even if they're not able to attend in person.
I love committee meetings. We can have more, we can have as many meetings as people want.
That sounds good. All right. So, this will be referred back to committee. When you guys are ready to bring it forward again, we'll, we'll discuss it again. Thank you. Okay. Moving right along, can, let's see, School Board Members' Comments, and I'll go first to Ms. Bland.
I would like to remind everyone, as testing season is approaching, stay calm and get enough sleep. It's important to keep a clear mind in order to excel and do well in areas you may need improvement on. Last Saturday, I had the pleasure to volunteer at Baldwin Elementary for the Community Connections Event. It was filled with learning opportunities, crafts, music, and sustainability. My favorite part was playing with the therapy dogs. Overall, the event was a great day of fun for all ages. Looking ahead, prom is this Friday night. I would just like to thank all the students, staff, and parents that are putting together this event, as well as after prom. If you have not bought your prom ticket, upperclassmen, please do so by Thursday. And I have a quick, I have a couple of quick dates and reminders. Senior Scholarship Night is on May 20th at 6:30 PM. Actually, let me backtrack. Rock Fest is on May 3rd at 7:00 PM, if you want to join us in the auditorium for some good music. And then, the Senior Trip to Busch Gardens is on May 21st. And finally, graduation is at Eagle Bank Arena on May 29th at 2:00 PM, so make sure to come out for that. And lastly, I just have a quick little reminder, Teacher Appreciation Week is next week. Please take the time to think and show your appreciation for any teachers that may have made it a positive impact. Teachers truly do not get enough credit. When I was in kindergarten, I said I didn't want to be a teacher, because I grew, because, when I grew up, because they don't get any recess. I think I was very ahead of my time with that comment. Teachers indeed never get a break and do so much more outside of school for their students than we may see, so please thank a teacher next time you step in a school, not just during Teacher Appreciation Week. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bland. Ms. Breeden?
Good evening. I want to congratulate my, the various peers who not only accomplished getting awards and medals in Skills USA, and I think it was the coding club, but also the opportunity to get involved in the community, in the school community, and explore the enriching programs that our school has to offer. And the next, I would like to highlight the Special Olympics that took place today, which I had the pleasure to participate in alongside countless other buddies, friends, staff, and volunteers, and family members. I want to shout out to all of them that made this possible. Osborne got to host it, and I also saw Dr. Jones and Chair Seberg there, but nonetheless, it was just a great event that got the whole community involved and provided a day for all the Manassas City Public School education classes to get together, have a good time, as well as spread the joy of sports and inclusion to everyone, as that, as that is what our Manassas City Public students deserve. And the next, I would also like to recognize the Job Fair that took place yesterday, and give a well-deserved highlight to our CTE and Work-Based Learning Team who presented earlier. They did a great job. And as Ms. Taylor stated, over 35 businesses came to the annual Job Fair, thanks to the communication done by our CTE team. They also ensure that internships and scholarships are readily available for all students. I also found it very encouraging hearing about the ways they can support, they can start supporting our EL and SPED students and get them in the programs as well, because, like I said, we need all students to be included in these different opportunities at our schools. It's a very important part of Manassas City. And overall, it is just evident that the Work-Based Learning Team truly likes, likes the work that they do, and they, they really work hard for the students at Manassas City Public Schools. Not only are, not only the kids currently at Osborne, but they are also looking out for the rising generations of our students to come through our school systems. Mr. Brown, Ms. Taylor, and Ms. Eason, show they truly love their job, and specifically, our students. Thank you all for your dedication. That is all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Awesome. And now, I'll go to Dr. Jones.
I want to say congratulations to all the Skills USA and Cyber Patriot Team rewardees tonight. I hope you all enjoyed your spring break, and I just wanted to share that I helped chaperone 37 students on HBCU College Tour during spring break, and this time was rewarding, because I saw students, many of them visited colleges and universities for the first time. One student was accepted and received a $20,000 scholarship to Clifton University, and another student learned that he would be accepted into a college with a GED. So, overall, students learn about possibilities beyond high school. And then, to have Ms. Taylor come behind that today and do, tell us the great work that Osborne High School is doing with the CTE program, that's also a program that helps students grow, and students benefit from the programs and the work skills that they're being taught. So, we are doing many things that we can do in the community for our students, and I think we should just continue to do those. I started my teaching career in special education, so I was glad to see students and adult participation in Special Olympics today. Special thanks to all that helped plan and execute the day for our students, and it was a perfect day, although it was rained out a couple of times. Also, I want to thank the Leadership Principal in 2025 for celebrating our community with connections. This was a fun activity for the entire family, and the garden dedication was part of this event on Saturday at Baldwin Elementary. The gardens will provide great learning opportunities for students. Teacher Appreciation Week is Monday, starting on Monday, May 5th, and it runs through Friday, May 9th. This is a perfect time for us to let our teachers know how much they are appreciated. Becky Pringle, NEA President, wrote, "Educators, you are leading the way, guiding and protecting, nurturing and supporting our precious students all across the nation, every day, all day. You provide our students with the tools they need to build a future that will help them live lives into their wildest dreams." This is a perfect time for students to write a thank you note, and parents, you can also write a thank you note, also provide feedback to school administration about all those great teachers we have, volunteer in the schools, and even prepare a small snack for our teachers. I wanted to personally thank all educators in our schools. Your work does not go unnoticed, and our students benefit from your services on a daily basis. And also, May will be a very busy month, so please take time to mark your calendars to make sure you don't miss any of those concerts, showcases, and the scholarship program, and more. So, make, make sure you have everything in your calendar as we are moving towards the end of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Mrs. Brezha?
Thank you so much. So, first, I want to congratulate our spotlights, Skills USA and Cyber Patriots. Both of you, I don't know, it's a mouthful, right, Cyber Patriots? You know, both of these organizations, I love the opportunities that our kids are able to have and to explore, and most importantly, and there is still one adult, there's still an adult in the room who mentors and works with those kids, I mean, all, all of you do, obviously, but, you know, to take volunteer time to do that really is incredible, so I want to express my appreciation for that. Coming up, I've, there's a whole bunch that's coming up, because we are here in the spring. The Governor's School Research Symposium is coming up on Friday from 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the Freedom Center, so I can't believe it's that time of year already, but go see what our kids have been working on. It's some really high-level stuff. Of course, First Friday here in our community, there is, I believe, a Health Expo at Metz that's going to be out on Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Robotics Open House Wednesday, May 7th, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Go check out our choir on either May 8th or 9th. May 8th at 6:50 PM has a special opening act from Hayden Elementary, so go check them out. May 8th and 9th at 7:00 PM at Osborne. The Manassas Reads Festival is coming up on Saturday, May 10th, 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Harris Pavilion. And also, the Boys and Girls Club is having a fundraising golf tournament, so if you are interested in supporting the Boys and Girls Club, I have foursomes for sale. You can purchase those and go, go golf and support our kids. That, this organization does a lot of great things for Manassas City Public School students, but also, they are partially federally funded, and they're a little worried about that, too. So, if you have ever been thinking about your charitable contributions, I recommend that one. The, since our last meeting, I had the pleasure of attending the Connections Community Event hosted at Baldwin, Governance Training in Charlottesville. We are, we're, we have developed a lot of these protocols, and also, one of the things that we have talked about there is the percent of time that you use, and so, I do have the time. I've been timing everything, and I'm going to send a report out to everybody when, for discussing student outcomes in particular, and to try to maximize the time where you're talking specifically about student outcomes. We did, we had a Governor's School Board meeting, we had an immigrant and refugee student update meeting, where we did tackle some, I think, really good and substantial issues about some accessibility and translation issues that were coming through the registration process. So, I'm happy that we were able to bring those things to light and talk those things through, and hopefully, some things will really concretely change for our students who are accessing our school, who are, who are needing to register and access schooling here. And of course, many of us went to the RISE Dinner, too, so congratulations to our support staff who were honored there, and the Osborne Career Fair yesterday. The final thing I want to mention is that four of us were able to go to a VSBA training on trust, and this is my, there are eight pillars of trust, I'm going to carry this around with me everywhere, I regret to inform you, I have a new thing. But I do think that there is a lot that we can learn, particularly, you know, through this meeting, we already were talking about clarity, endeavoring to do that as much as possible. So, I'm, I'm really feeling a lot of good forward momentum about where we are going as a governance team, and that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Brezha. Mrs. Stevens?
Thank you. I'm the liaison for the Safe and Healthy Schools Committee. The committee met on the 24th of April, and while I was not able to attend, I would like to share some highlights or updates from the meeting. The first is the Health and Fitness Expo. The Health and Fitness Expo will be held on May 3rd at Metz Middle School. The purpose is to highlight portions of the health and PE curriculum for the community and to engage community partners who support MCPS, and community partners whose mission is to support health and physical fitness. The next thing that was discussed was the Parent E3 Series Program. The next thing that was discussed was the Parent E3 Series Program. And Master Police Officer TJ Rodriguez, who's sitting in the very back of the room, presented information on the program. It is rooted in Twenty-First Century Policing Initiatives. Officer Rodriguez explained that the program was initially implemented through the help of a grant, but the program's success has led the MCPD to absorb the cost and maintain the program as part of its operating budget. Some of the things that they have covered include hidden-in-plane sight, how to identify substances in your household, in your child's room, that may be dangerous, harmful, gangs, internet safety, human trafficking, mental health, youth violence, and chronic absenteeism. It has, the partnership between MCPD and MCPS has allowed for simultaneous translation in Spanish. So it's accessible to more community members. The next E3 event will be September twenty twenty-five. I don't know yet what it's going to be about, but I do recommend attending. They're very informative. Everyone I've attended, I have learned something new that I haven't been able to use in my family life or when I wear my other hat as a teacher. The next thing was presented by Heather Wisniski, the Clinical Nurse Coordinator, about vaccine, school-located vaccine clinics. The next school-located vaccine clinic will be May sixth at Osborne High School for rising twelfth-grade students. The MAP Clinic, which is located at the Manassas Park Community Center, is offering appointments for MCPS students on May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. And the MCPS Community Resource Fair is scheduled for August second, and the plan is to offer some vaccines at that event with the assistance of the Prince William County Health Department. Nurse Gina Bellamy provided us with legislative updates as far as legislation coming out of Richmond is concerned. And Ms. Carol, the Georgetown South Community Manager, shared that the community has significant needs for dentistry, medication availability, and optometry services. They'll have a back-to-school night in the fall for residents, and this may be an opportunity to provide community partner information and available services. So if you know anyone or any organizations that can provide dentistry, medication, availability, and optometry services, please reach out to Ms. Carol. She would love to hear from you. And then, like Ms. Breja, I did attend the, sorry, my brain stopped working there for a minute.
Just edge.
Thank you. Sorry, I had these in order and I changed the order. I was going to speak. So over the break, I was able to travel to Charlottesville where we did have the Trust Edge Experience. We learned that trust is the cornerstone of success and that successful organizations are built on trust, and the greatest outcomes occur when there's a foundation of trust. Through discussion and self-reflection, I learned that I still have a lot of work to do, and that's my focus moving forward. Then last week, I had the opportunity to attend the All-City Orchestra Concert last week at Osborne. And I was sitting there watching the kids play and listening to it. It was amazing. They were incredible. But all I could think was, you hear negative things being said about our school division. But what people aren't talking about are the amazing things our students are doing. The orchestra, Baldwin, Mayfield, Metz, Osborne, they were amazing. And one of the things that, that really impressed me was, Mayfield and Baldwin Intermediate, both have orchestra, they don't normally practice together. They'd only practiced together once when both orchestras came together and played a piece as though they had been playing together forever. They'd only practiced that morning. So please, I encourage you to check out the orchestra event online. I'm sure you can find it on YouTube. And I really want to thank Latoya Lamont for Osborne High School. She has done a fabulous job of teaching and leading her musicians, and Mr. Reed and Mr. Stackhouse. They've done a wonderful job as well at teaching and guiding our young students because many of those students at Mayfield and Baldwin are going to be lifelong instrument players. And the outlet that it gives them to be creative in a musical way is really quite amazing. So if you have the opportunity, look them up on YouTube. It's a wonderful, wonderful show, and I walked away just so happy and proud of our students. So thank you.
Wonderful. Ms. Brown.
Good evening. I would like to begin my comments again by congratulating the Osborne Skills USA and the Cyber Patriot Team. Also, congratulations, Ms. Bland, for completing your clinical hours. I'm so proud of you. And thank you again, Ms. Taylor. Your work is wonderful. Thank you for everything that you do. And Mr. Russ, thank you for keeping us on time and on budget. We like that. And Mr. Masiak, congratulations on finally getting the Special Olympics three times a charm. And I'm sorry that I had to miss it, but thank you for doing that. I know that takes a lot of great coordination, so I appreciate it. Inclusion is one of my love languages. I thank you so much for everything that you do. I just, I'm going to be brief tonight. I just want to say that it has been a very busy April. And I'm just going to highlight some of the events that I attended with my colleagues. I attended the board training on April ninth, but also after that training, I had the great honor to attend an event at the Meredith House where Old Town Strong granted MCPS Education Foundation a donation of fifty, fifty-four hundred dollars. I just want to take a second here to thank them again for investing so much in our students. It's greatly appreciated. I also attended a leadership training with State Virginia Latino Leaders on April twelfth. And believe it or not, I was able to steal some time for my grandkids during spring break. That was much needed rest, so I hope our teachers also got some rest. I, right after spring break, we attended the Second Immigration and Refugee Action Committee. And we conducted the student interviews, which was delightful. Thank you to all the students who wanted to serve and came to be interviewed by Dr. Jones and I. The, let's see, I attended a work session on April twenty-fourth. And also, believe it or not, I had the joy to attend Arbor Day on April twenty-fifth, which was out of my work day. So it was really great that I was able to steal some time from, between doctor's appointments to do that. I attended the Community Connections Garden Dedication of Baldwin on April twenty-sixth. And just on Sunday, I co-hosted a Hispanic Children's Day Celebration along with Councilwoman Yessi Amaya from Manassas Park, where we were able to meet and greet about eighty families and their children. So that was a joy. I look forward to May, and I look forward to celebrating all of our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Miles.
Yes, I have quite a few comments, but first, I just want to give congratulations to all our Skills USA participants who won medals and those who participated. And I appreciate the law enforcement officers who are investing in the success of our students. So thank you so much for that. Congratulations to our Cyber Patriot Team for all of their accomplishments. I hope everyone had a great spring break. My spring break was spent in Hawaii, so I am very thankful for that. We saved up a lot of money to go there, and my daughter and I were, enjoyed it very much. But I was also able to go to a lot of events. Oh, right when I came back, there were so many, but I enjoyed every one of them. First, I went to the Gifted and Talented Advisory Committee Meeting. And it was actually the last one of this school year held at Baldwin Intermediate. And they talked about, the Gifted and Talented at Osborne talked about their experiences in gifted over the course of the year, the things that they enjoyed. And one of the highlights I really enjoyed from the meeting was when Metz students from the interdisciplinary research class presented their community outreach project, Buddy Baskets. They're actually collecting items to give to moms in need, and they're actually going to be able to be presenting other projects next month, so stay tuned to that. A few other things I learned from the GTAC meeting was Baldwin will be hosting a Shark Tank-themed enrichment program for our gifted students for the rising third to the rising seventh graders in June. Transportation will be provided for that, and students in the GT process, if they're in the GT process right now, who are found eligible will also be able to attend. And last week, I also was, I also attended the Staff Rise Awards. Congratulations to all our nominees and this year's winner, Louis Riveren Wong. I hope I spelled, I pronounced that right. A custodial, custodial shift supervisor at Weems Elementary, so congratulations to you for your hard work. And it just goes without saying that as a school board and governance team, I know we appreciate all you do. We talk about our teachers and our admin, but we would not be able to have our schools work the way they do without our paraprofessionals, our clerical administrative staff, custodians, food service workers, transportation staff, health and technical service professionals, and our skills trades employees. So they're very important. So I thought it was great that we recognized them with that award. I know that not all school districts do that, so that, I thought that was really great. The other thing that I got to attend was the All-District Band and Orchestra Concerts. And I agree with Ms. Stevens when she said how wonderful they sounded. My son actually plays a saxophone for Mayfield, and they played one song, but they played it so well, no one squeaked. And I remember playing my first band, and we squeaked, and I was a clarinet player. So just hearing how, how beautiful they sounded and the orchestra and the jazz band, oh my goodness. I look forward to hearing them again, but it was very encouraging to see that. And just a shout out to all our band and orchestra teachers and our art teachers. I was able to go to the art show. We just have some talented students here. And just, just the, I was looking at one art, art project, and I was like, oh my goodness, I can't believe that's an elementary student. So we just have a lot of talent. And Saturday morning, I was able to stop by the Connections, a celebration of our community, held at Baldwin. And I enjoyed talking to the Manassas Therapy Dogs Booth that brings therapy dogs into schools. I love dogs. It was, it was nice. I think they had three of them there. And they say they currently are at Round Elementary, actually participates in this program. And I'm hoping that one day we'll be able to get them at other schools. I also stopped by the Pink Space Theory Booth, and they were able to explain their program. And they bring after-school enrichment STEM programs to girls. And that's another thing that I'm hoping that maybe one day we'll be able to add to our, our list of after-school programs. But I want to give a little information about our work, our work session highlights. Last week at our work session, I presented a proposal to the board of, an idea of having town hall meetings. I gave three different types of town hall meetings that have been used successfully in other school boards. And the idea is going to be discussed further at an Educational Support Committee meeting in May. So we should hear more information about that. But next week, we are celebrating Teacher Appreciation Week. I want to encourage parents and students to thank a teacher next week. Whether it's a homemade card, I get a lot of those as a second-grade teacher, a flower, a gift, anything. I know everyone, everyone here can think of one teacher, maybe two, maybe three, that impacted them. I know I can think of three, my fourth-grade teacher, my fifth-grade teacher, and I know I remember their names. So I know they're, we have students that are impacted every day by the, the teachers that give their time, their dedication to our students. Teachers have a life-changing impact on our students. They are valuable. I want to say thank you to all our teachers in Manassas City. We value you, value you, excuse me. Whether the collective bargaining didn't go the way that you wanted it to go, don't forget that we, as a school board, value you. And behind every child who believes in themselves, a teacher believed in them first, and I believe that. So some upcoming events to make you aware of. Baldwin Intermediate is sponsoring a shoe drive fundraiser. All shoes will be donated to people in need, and the school gets forty cents per pound of shoes donated. And to give you kind of an idea, a bag of shoes is twenty-five shoes in a bag, and for a bag, it's forty cents per pound. So if you have shoes you're trying to get rid of, bring them to Baldwin. They'll have a box outside of their door. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Miles. Vice Chair Spall.
Thank you, Chair. Number one, I just want to say, how about the school board reps? They did a great job tonight. They do a great job every time, and I'm really proud of them. Number two, I wanted to thank Skills USA, Cyber Patriot Team. I could spend plenty of time talking about garden dedications and Arbor Day celebrations and governance training episodes. But what I really want to discuss tonight, I think, is the budget and the vote that's coming up for our council. As Vice Chair of the School Board and as someone who deeply values the history and future of public education in our city, I feel compelled to speak clearly about where we've been, where we are, and where I feel we must go with respect to our budget. In the late nineteen nineties, under the leadership of School Board Member Bob Oliver, whose daughter-in-law is a current teacher at Manassas City Public Schools, Manassas operated under a fifty-six point seven percent revenue-sharing model that reflected a strong commitment to our schools. That model shifted during two thousand eight recession to a three percent annual increase, not out of neglect, but as a temporary measure to weather one of the most challenging financial crises in modern history. Yet today, that temporary fix has become the norm, and our schools now receive just over forty percent of the city's general revenue, far below the fifty-seven percent or more that neighboring districts invest in our children. The opportunity before the council to contribute an additional one point seven million is more than a line item. It's a reflection of our community's values. I urge, I urge our elected leaders to vote with courage, clarity, and conviction to show that Manassas is ready to invest boldly in the success of every student we serve. I get a little disjointed here, but not long ago, I spoke with a man, Mr. Lee, a retired teacher who shared a glimpse of his past. And when he started his career in Manassas in nineteen fifty-six, his salary was just four thousand dollars a year. But dinner only costs fifty cents and a haircut was a dollar. Times change, but some advice never does. As Mr. Lee and generations of Manassas City students have said, please go to school. It's the best time of your life. Consider this, five years ago, a starting teacher in Manassas earned fifty thousand dollars. Today, that number has climbed past fifty-nine thousand dollars. My personal goal is to start at seventy thousand dollars. I ask each of you, how do we get there if not together? I would ask you guys to look for Supporting Our Staff Flyers that are available near the school board reps down front or at the table in the lobby. And I think I'm going to leave it at that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. All right, I'm going to wrap it up here because we still have to go into closed session. I'm not going to repeat everything because we've all been all over the place, but I do hope that everyone had a safe, fun, and/or restful spring break. Since the last meeting, I did attend the Finding Nemo Play at Hayden, which was just delightful. And these third and fourth graders, they did a really good job with their stage presence, their acting, and their singing. Regarding professional development, it's very important to me to participate in the school board professional development opportunities whenever possible. And recently, some of us, as it's been mentioned, participated in the Trust Edge Experience, and it was time well spent. I'd like to thank Mrs. Stevens, Mrs. Breja, and Vice Chair Spall for their participation and dedication to board development. The All-City Orchestra and Band, got to go to both. Orchestra was lovely. Band, Dana, the Mayfield Band was spectacular. They did not sound like a fifth, sixth-grade band. It was, it was great. On the twenty-first, attended the Rise Awards, recognizing our, recognizing inspiring school employees awards. And that has been posted and all over the place, and they're wonderful. Arbor Day was a great, beautiful day. May is sure to be a busy month with Teacher Appreciation Week, end-of-the-year activities, and graduation. If you are a parent of a senior, stay tuned to the Osborne Class of Twenty Twenty-Five page for more updates. Thank you to all that are sharing your support for full funding of Manassas City Public Schools. The school board will have only one regular business meeting next month, and it will be Tuesday, May thirteenth. And with that, I conclude my comments, and I'll ask for a motion to go into closed session.
Chair, I move that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two dot two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, is amended for the following purpose. Discussion of candidates for the School Board Student Representatives for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-three, P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-four, P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Stevens, second by Mrs. Breja, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section two point two dash three seven one one, Part A, Paragraph two of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, is amended for the following purpose. Discussion of candidates for the School Board Student Representatives for the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six school year. P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-three, P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-four, and P E R S twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We will head into closed session.